So we're recording, okay. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled October 14th meeting. Please rise as you're able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll run through a couple of things, and I would like to add something to the agenda when we get there. But any public comments? I know we have people from the building committee. All right, so any correspondence? Nothing? Excellent. So I'd like to make a motion that we add to new business, the design for the Bethel High School's roof design. Okay, is that enough, Brad, at that point?
Yeah, so I give the motion?
Please.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor for adding under new business the high school design roof project? All right, okay, thank you. All right, so the first thing, we have some minutes from us from September 9th. Everybody have a minute to read the minutes?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meetings minutes as presented from our September 9th, 2025 meeting.
Okay, and we have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion about the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cynthia, you go with that?
She was absolutely, I think.
Yeah, she was.
Yeah, she was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. All right, thank you, all right. The next thing on the agenda is the salt bin. I believe I see Eric here. It seemed like we've been talking about this for two years, but Eric, can you explain to us about salt bin repairs, please?
Yes, thank you, Nick. And just before I forget, all four of the items I'll be talking about tonight are all in the capital plan, just in case you forget that. So the the salt and sand shed, yes, deciding this, we went back. This goes back a ways because we were waiting for some updates to this to this quote, which we started asking back in March. And there were some changes that happened and kind of the back and forth is why it why it languished for so long. So just to give you the backstory, when we originally got a quote for this, we went straight to our one of our go-to guys who's very good, Edward Keak, Ed Keak, he's in town, he's a Bethel guy. I'm sure most of you guys are familiar with him. And he presented a quote to basically paint and refinish the siding. By the way, we had done the roof a couple of years ago. You probably remember that. So he had anyway, he gave us a quote of about $20,000 to paint and he
Eric, could you, it's very distracting with talking from the audience. If we could just hold it down or walk out if you need to, Eric, please.
I'm sorry, can you hear me okay?
No, I can hear you, it's just there was a distraction here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
All right, I'll go ahead then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, his quote only had replacing of five of the T111 siding panels. When we went to get another quote, a second quote from JS Contracting, they had suggested we repair 45 of the sheets, so that discrepancy took a while to resolve. I went out there with the building official, Chris Baldwin, and we looked closely at it and determined that there should be 45 panels replaced, so we agreed with the second quote. So then we went back to Ed Keak, got another quote for 45 panels. So Ed Keak's quote was a price of $32,740. JS Contracting's quote was $28,500. And that's what we presented to the Board of Selectmen. And the reason that they referred it to you for $34,000 was to add a 20% contingency to the JS Contracting quote in case any kind of unforeseen rot is discovered.
Okay. So anybody have any questions for the salt repair? Everybody, I think, pretty much knows what this is. Eric, just 20%, you know, when we always do these contingencies, these projects always say, oh, we're under budget, or we made budget, but the contingency is all gone. You know what I mean? So to me, when you use contingency, you're over budget, right? So is 20% a number that you normally would pick?
Yeah, especially in a case like this where there could be rot that we couldn't see from an external inspection. And I will reiterate, as Brad can testify, anytime we don't use, we frequently do not use the full amount and will return the funds. So if everything goes well, then we won't use that 20% contingency and then return it to the budget.
That's a good question.
Does it go?
Approximately how?
Cynthia, hold on a sec, Brad just started something. I know there's a delay, God, Brad.
How many, if you had to get, how many are on the building? Because you're talking about replacing 45 of them.
It's hundreds.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, it's hundreds.
If there were 60, then
No, right, right, right. Why don't you add them all up now? Cynthia, did you have a question?
Yeah. So when, what projects have the contingency been returned? It goes to the general fund, right? If it were returning, go back to the would it go to the general fund?
Because it's CNR, Cynthia, anything not used just stays back in the CNR account, cabinet.
In the CNR, right. So what I'm asking is, what projects has that happened with?
Recent ones, the Bennett Park pond. So like the Bennett Park pond repair was approved at $13,800, it came in at $11,400. I'm just trying to find like Public Works projects.
That's, that's what
The mini splits in the server room here came in $3,500 under budget out of $40,000. Again, I don't know how much of it was contingency in here, I just had the total.
Right, that's what I'm, I'm, that's my next question. So how do you know it's contingency and what's under budget? What's the difference? Because one has been agreed upon contingency, right?
Yeah, we'd have to go back to the original of what the ask was and how much of it was contingency. A lot of the CNR stuff contingency.
Okay. All right.
Fred, want to finish your thought, or?
No, I was just saying that a lot of the CNR projects usually it's, here's the quote, here's this. Obviously, this one's a little bit different. Once you start opening something up, you don't know what else we're gonna find.
Yep, right.
Eric, you would be on site to say, yeah, rip these three more boards off, or there's some studying or something behind it? Who's making that call?
Either myself or John from my office. Probably Chris would also help help me out on that as well.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion, or?
One question.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a hard of hearing, I'll hold.
Okay, no, I noticed in the email chain you asked twice, does he has workers' compensation, insurance, and a license? And he never answered you, I'm assuming you can turn that elsewhere?
Yes, yes, we've had a lot of questions about insurance. Melanie, our new counsel, has given us guidance, updated guidance on that recently, so we've been very careful and very sure to make sure we have that.
All right, should check.
And, and I'm sorry, I didn't read through it, Eric, is there a lift required and he's got all that, he owns everything?
Yeah, he's got everything. He shouldn't need to borrow anything from us.
All right.
Ready? Yes, so I'd like to make a motion that we spend $34,000 that are in the CNR account to repair the highway department's sand and salt shed.
Do we have a second?
And I'm sorry, not to exceed $34,000, sorry.
I'll second it since you thought I already did.
I heard that then. All right, so we have a little, a second, is there any other discussion? Try everybody's mind. Single by an eye, all right. Thank you. Right. Next thing is consideration for a study for the highway garage roof. It seems like this has been going on for longer than I've been here, Eric.
Yes, this is even a longer one. So for this one, we have a presentation to kind of give you the backstory. So I'm gonna try to share my screen now, and hopefully this, this works, we can where's my PowerPoint here? I will just let me see. Give me a second, let me see if I can. Hmm.
Looks like you practiced before you got online.
I did. Kelsey, do you need to give me permission for this to work?
Go away.
Nick?
Yes. Yes, Cynthia.
I just wanna, I want to ask a quick question before, you know, while we're getting this going.
Yes. Jump on.
Oh, I'm jumping as fast as I can. So the money that we approved in 2015 to deal with this highway garage roof, is that gone? Was that spent on other things?
So the
Was this a long story?
Yeah, Cynthia, Brad's gonna answer. Cynthia, I know there's a delay.
Okay.
So the money, like in 2013, there was a capital project for the garage roof and $60,000, we only spent $15,000 of it. There's another year out there. There's another year that we had, because it was capital money and not capital non-recurring money, we only kind of borrowed what, back borrowing what we actually spent. But because we didn't borrow that money
Borrowing.
Still be able to go. Yeah, that was back in the credit card days.
Okay, fair enough, got it, thank you.
All right, Eric, do you have your?
Yeah, can you see my screen?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes, Eric, go right ahead, please.
Okay, thanks. So just a little history here of the highway garage roof. You can see the highway garage from an aerial photo right here. You can see what it looks like, this is pretty recent aerial. So here's a bit of a bird's eye view, as they call it. Basically, to the right-hand side is to the north, this is the highway garage. The orange, orangey-yellow dashed line that you see is the original building, which was built in 1977. There's a firewall between two sections of it, right in the middle, where basically one rectangle meets another, you can kind of see that. And then on the top left of the screen is a building addition that dates back to 1986. So this is what we're talking about here. Here are some of the floor plans from 1977. Here's the plans from 1986. And we'll say, we don't have all of the records from the original building, but we know that Orgazie, which is a pre-engineered building contractor, was involved. And they drew the foundation plans, and we believe most of the components are that. This addition here from 1986 is definitely 100% Orgazie design. So just a reminder, why do we need this project? What are the reasons? There's basically three components of the project. The roof is requiring ongoing and continual repairs. We have every, I would say, one or two times a year, we have our roofing contractor will come to us and say, we need another repair. That's offshore roofing, they do a great job, but we don't want to keep patching this roof. The second thing, and the architect that we brought on, you'll hear about in a minute, Gary Tarantino, his concern is that a heavy snow load could, could be a problem, especially if we get the right conditions, or I said, you should say kind of the wrong conditions of heavy snowfall, it's wet, that could be an issue. And finally, the third component is we want to add sprinklers. This is not something that was in the old project when, when this was talked about before. The reason for the sprinklers is basically as an insurance policy, we have a few million dollars worth of dump trucks, I'm not even sure how much, plus all the other equipment in there. That stuff, not only would it be a loss of millions of dollars if something were to happen at the garage, but also it's in some sense irreplaceable because you know, you can't just go out and pick these things up, even if you have the money. There was a highway garage that caught fire in Minden, New York in 2022. So it's something that we're aware of and concerned about, so that's the reason for the third component, the sprinklers. Here's some photos of from earlier, excuse me, from earlier this year, the condition of the roof. You can see we have standing water, you can see we have corrosion and rust going on. Here's some more, these are some of the spot repairs that were made. You can see some of that standing water in there. So that's the roof. The structure, when we're talking about the structure, we're mostly talking about these trusses that you can see here and the columns supporting them. The challenges to this are that these are proprietary Orgazie components. They were pre-engineered. And so as you're aware, this, this project has a long history of kind of starting and stopping. I'll just go over this list briefly, but there were some roofing column repairs made in the 2014 to 2016 range. There were assessments for the roof and the structural components in 2017. There were tests done in 2018 for asbestos and roof joists welds. The good news is, is that there is no asbestos, so we don't have to worry about that. There were design plans put together in 2018, and then an RFP went out for that structural component. There was a bid received from Verdi Construction. I'm not sure if it was the only one, and that's the point at which the project stalled. I came into this role after that. When I was here, we started tentatively looking into it again. We had Collier's engineer do kind of a very cursory overview analysis of it, and they came up with some cost estimates for the design and construction. But then basically kind of fell to the back burner. We've had some new spot repairs done earlier this year, and that's when we really made a push to bring this thing back to the forefront and give it some momentum so we can keep going. So where we are now is we have a proposal for an architectural assessment from Tarantino Architecture, and a proposal for an engineering assessment from Torrello Engineering. These, this is what you see here, these are the costs for these two assessments. And the reason we had to get new assessments, we did go back and ask about using the old assessments, but both of the architect and engineer were uncomfortable using those previous assessments because they were seven or eight years old at this point. So the request that came from the Board of Selectmen, the 8,500 is, if you look at the quote itself, it's 8,500 plus incidentals reimbursables, and then the other one is $10,800. So that's, that total is about $19,300, so the Board of Selectmen asked for $25,000 to cover any incidentals there. So that's where we are now, these two assessments. So basically, just to kind of bring this to a high-level overview in terms of where we want to go, you can see the three columns here, the roof replacement, the structural steel reinforcement, and the sprinkler. We don't need any kind of assessment for the sprinkler installation, so that's why that inside this green box, that's blank over there on the right. So the architectural and the engineering, you can see here in the screen box, that's what we're asking for at this point. Once those are done and on their way, we want to move to the next phase of design, in which case we'd get an architectural design, there'd be a little bit of MEP, or otherwise known as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing work for that, because there are some roof perforations and some, some equipment that goes through there. The engineering for this structural steel and the sprinkler designs, that's where we want to go next. These are all, and these boxes are all dashed lines because we're not, we're not asking for that right now. I just did want to give you a big overview of the project so you see where we're going. And then with that, we would go out for construction to an RFP and go to construction. So that's pretty much my presentation. I will stop sharing. And open it up for questions. And by the way, we have one thing I didn't mention is we, earlier this year, we passed this over to the Public Site and Building Committee, who's gonna be paring the torch and helping us move this forward. So a few of the representatives from them, from that committee are here tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Eric? Please don't let me be the only one. Eric, why did they need contingency? It's not like you're gonna find rotten wood. Why do they need, they looked and figured out, how many hours is it gonna figure out this job? Why do they need contingency for, for a 20%?
Oh, that was not, that's not contingency, that's just the incidental cost, so we just didn't want to have to come back to you guys. I think the idea is a little on there, and then if we don't use it, we won't use it, but we won't have to come back and ask for more money.
The police department did that and used hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, does any of the questions, so is there water down there that you can put sprinklers? And if those trucks are burning, I don't care how much water you put on it, why are we putting sprinklers then? Is it for a trash basket on fire, or are you trying to put the trucks out with water?
No, this would be to prevent a fire, not, not once everything's a blazing inferno, the sprinkler system would kick in initially if there was any kind of, yeah, like a trash can, whatever it may be.
But you're not saying if a battery burned up on a truck and caught one of the Max or Sterling's on fire, the water's not gonna pour out, you would agree?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, and the idea is that it would, it would kick in before it got to something really bad like that.
Okay. Is there a water main down there?
Yes, there is, I believe there is.
There's city water, and you can hook up a main to it?
Yeah. John, do you have the detail on that? I know you had, you had talked to Kelly about that recently.
Yeah, there's a main that runs from the up, some odd drive, and it ties into the
And it's in the building, you would accept the equipment for this?
We talked to Kelly about it, yeah.
Okay. Do we get a savings on insurance cost by installing sprinklers?
I would doubt, I don't think it's gonna be, if there was anything, it'd be minor.
Cynthia, can I see your hand up?
Yes, my green hand and my, yes, I'm here. So
God, answer your question, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there's just a delay, that's all.
Okay, back to the contingency question. The, yeah, the police, the police department would just, there were a lot of change orders, and that contingency just got spent, and Building and Site Commission was involved in that too, so I mean, this is less money, obviously, but who'd be the, the boss, who's gonna be the clerk, who's gonna oversee it? You, Eric, is it you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm involved. So yes, John from my office, and everyone you see here sitting here from Public Site, we've been meeting with them. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna walk away, we're gonna, you'll be involved.
I understand. Here's my concern, and I don't want to live in the past, but this was a big kerfuffle. No one would admit when, with the police station, I mean, we had three boards there, and I said, who's the captain of this ship? And there was like a 10-second silence. I didn't know if there's one person is designated to be the point person. You know, it's not enough money really to hire a clerk of the works, but it just, to me, I just remember that police station boy, that was just, you know, a good one, so, you know, and I'm somebody to be the point person that yeah.
Yeah, so technically speaking, since we are passing this off to the Public Site and Building Committee, I guess it would be Roger, who's the chairman, and he's here.
Okay, and it's Roger, the greatest. Roger, okay with that?
I see.
Hopefully, he agrees with me. Roger, speak up if
Is he sitting right there? It doesn't have to be under oath. So
Public, public input is over. When we get to the public site, we'll grab you, okay? No, there was no question, it was not addressed. If there is, I'll pass it forward. Thank you, Roger.
Well, so Eric, I know this is not a contingency fund. It's for incidentals. Could you give me a couple examples of incidentals that this cover?
Usually it covers things like travel costs, printing costs, those sorts of things.
But wouldn't they already be in the original quote?
Sometimes they don't include it, they keep it as a separate item that's unspecified.
But then, that's not a complete quote. That's my problem with that. Like, it's like the incidentals. You know, I mean, I know some of them are unforeseeable, but some of them are standard. Like printing costs and all that stuff.
Eric, when the money's approved, when the money's approved here, you need to write a contract with them. Will you protect the town and make sure there's not, you know, coffee K-cups in their, in their office? You know, that's what we're looking for.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Does anybody else?
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Thank you, Eric.
I just, I just, I have one question, if we're okay.
We're fine, okay.
So
Yeah.
So Eric, the question is, the study is gonna include structural, roof, and sprinkler. That doesn't mean that we're gonna do all three of them at once, or all three of them when it's completed, is that correct?
Correct. This is just the assessments for the structure on the roof, yeah, and as far as, I'm not 100% sure what your question is, but please clarify if I'm misunderstanding you, but yeah, I mean, we'd have to work out when we get to construction schedule of how how everything's gonna be done. It is a working garage, how they're gonna work around that, and the phasing, is that sort of what you're getting at?
Well, I guess what I mean is, obviously, you gotta protect the structure before you put a roof on it, right? And if you got a structure, you want to make sure the roof is good, right? But if the sprinkler was $150,000, that was the price tag, we would then make a reasonable decision if it's worth the effort to do a sprinkler in a building like that, right?
Yeah, I mean, you would, we could always pull that out if we decided it wasn't worth it. Absolutely.
I like her.
How would you know if it wasn't worth it?
Well, I guess I guess what, I think what John's getting at is if the Board of Finance doesn't think it's worth it, I mean, we will definitely discuss it, I mean, the Public Site and Building Commission, everything is discussed, even down to the invoices, so at that, I think it would be very well vetted before it even got to you, but I mean, it's always an option.
Okay.
Yeah, our job is to figure out how to pay for some needs, I'm just hoping there's a mechanism.
Yeah. Someone want to mention that dollar? Does anybody else have any question?
I'd like to make a motion that we spend $25,000 for a feasibility study for the highway garage roof project. I guess we're just calling it a roof project. Does that work?
Yeah, that's what we've been referring to as
Add aware. To include structural roof repairs or replacement and feasibility of a sprinkler system. And for it to come and for it to come out of our CNR account, please.
Well, just to clarify, we're not looking at the sprinkler system, we're just looking at, at this point in time, we're just looking at the architectural for the roof and the structural for the steel.
Oh, that $25,000 doesn't include sprinkler, that's what we said.
The next step would be design. They're gonna ask for money. So right now, they're just assessing what's currently there.
Okay.
I will second that one.
All right, all in favor?
I'm sorry, that's just the, I've been just parsing words, it's up to $25,000. I thought
Not to exceed.
June, now, not to exceed, right?
Not to exceed.
Try everybody's mind, single by an eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia. Uh, consideration, library boiler repairs. We walked up there a couple of years ago. Eric, do you have something on the boilers, Eric?
Yep, yep, hold on a sec. So, yeah. So the boilers. Yes, we have been looking at this for a while, so there's four boilers. There's four boilers in the library, uh, I'm not a HVAC expert, so I don't know all the detail, but I do know that. Uh, because of all the books in the library, they um. Excuse me, they they often run the boilers even in the summer alongside with the air conditioning uh, to um, minimize the humidity. So unlike our other buildings, the boilers in the library run most of the year. Um, now. Out of those four, um. Two of them are down. Now, we had, um. Now, you should have in your packet, you should only have uh, the. One proposal from B and D Controlled Air Corporation. And that's for uh, the thirty six thousand and change. Um. But so you know, we did get two other quotes, um. One was from Controlled Air for about eighty four thousand. And one was from Connecticut Combustion Corporation for, uh, it was a. Uh, at least a hundred and five thousand. So this one is the lowest by far. Uh, but not only that, we were impressed with um, B and D, we have met with them recently on a bunch of things and we've actually even brought them over. Um. To start doing our maintenance in in this building, municipal center and also the library. Uh, so they've been helping with that, so we're very happy with them. Uh, so the other thing I will say of their quote, uh, they were the only firm that considered the sequence of operations in terms of why these two boilers went down. Um, so they're looking to. And I think they've already started looking into, they were the only ones who who asked the question, well, why, why did these two boilers break down and the others didn't? And um. What um, Josh, who is the owner, believes that it's probably was a sequence of operations for how the boilers were called, they were probably. Um, whenever they came on, it would rely on just those two or it would start with those two and it never got to the other two. Um, so one of the things that this quote includes, that the other quotes don't include, is to look at optimizing that. Uh, reoptimizing that sequence of operations so that the um. Um, the load is shared, as you will, spread among all four boilers and not just on one or two. Um. So that's, that's, um, you should have that proposal in front of you, so that's, that's how we got to that point. So we got where we are now, yeah.
Eric, with the other two quotes being that large and Connecticut combustion's done a lot of work for us. Um. Are we sure that they bit the same apples to apples? Cause that's a pretty large spread.
Yeah, so so again, I'm not, uh, I'm not an expert in in the details, but from what I understand, um, B and D is just replacing the heat exchangers, not the entire. System. Um, whereas, um. Yes, I agree, Connecticut combustion does a great job, but I I find that. Especially in this case, they were really kind of there there to kind of sell new boilers. Um, that's kind of, that's kind of the angle they were get getting at from from my perspective. Um, and what we thought was good about this is is um, B and D is looking to kind of not just. Uh, just not just put in new boilers, um, they wanna see if they can. Also optimize, reoptimize the sequence of operations and and uh, get, just just change out what's broken.
I have a follow up question, if you don't mind, Nick, um. The, did B and D talk about what useful life of these two boilers might be if they're repaired versus? Right, cause you'd hate to spend thirty six thousand dollars to repair two boilers if like, you're gonna get three more years out of them.
I think you're down offline.
Well, I know they're down right now.
Offline.
Yeah.
Right, Eric, those those boilers been offline for a couple of years now, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely one of them, I think the other one, well, time seems to fly, so it might be almost a year or more at this point.
But you know what I'm saying, right? Like, I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have uh, like a number of how long it's gonna last, but I I think. I think, I mean, we can get you a more of a range, I don't know if they would say, but. I do remember when we had discussions, we were talking like, I think we're looking at like five to ten years. Um. I I could be wrong about that, um, but. I think this would.
I'm sorry, Cynthia?
Yeah, so my question is. So there's not, the boiler replacement would be on an as needed if they found out that the. The boy, one of the boilers was just completely. Um, not usable and they, is that how it would work or? Question is the two.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
There are four boilers, right?
Yeah.
In the library, okay. Two apparently never got online.
Yeah, that's what it appears to be, that's what ha- what happened.
How old are those boilers? The two that didn't get online?
Well, I don't, I don't know if they were never online, um, but they were definitely more lightly used.
Yeah, the um, what's the word? The program makes them. Wonder, whatever, wasn't implemented, so. My question is, are they staggered in age, some older than theirs, or are they, were they all installed at the same time?
No, all four boilers are are from the same, all four boilers were installed at the same time.
Okay, so what we like, and and we've been talking about this on the board of finance, is to get life. And of these, this kind of equipment, so. When you say you're looking five to ten years or whatever, will the company who is doing the work, is there any sort of? You know, prediction or guarantee or even if it's two years, but then saying the life cycle of this. Uh, appliance will be ten years, is there any way to get that up for me?
Uh, I can ask, I don't have it right now.
Right, I didn't think you did, but see, we're, we get surprised by these things, usually the boiler blows up or something. But in this case, you know, you're doing a very measured approach to, you know, maybe. But you know, it's just good to know. The time span, so we can predict when, even if it's working perfectly, when it has to be replaced. That's where I'm from.
That's a good point.
So is there any, find that out?
Yeah, I can, I can ask and and see what I can find out.
That'd be great.
So Eric, Eric, to bring this in, we have four boilers up there, they normally would all run in series, right, to keep them all working less. Two of them had a problem and they got taken out of line, is that correct? So they need to be changed.
Yes, two of them are basically kaput at the moment.
Yeah.
Well, but if they're repaired, you know what I mean?
Karen, so and and this is probably a naive question, but if we've always had four boilers and only two of them really got consistent use. Do we need to have four, is it sized correctly, or should we be able to go down to three and be okay?
Um, so this is where, again, I'm I'm kind of getting a little bit out of my expertise, I know um, Dean from Connecticut combustion talks about this all the time. Basically. I think, so with the high, these, these are, um. My understanding was that that was the design and the idea is that it spreads the load and you have some redundancy, so you have a backup system in case something goes down. So like, for instance, what we did, I can only kind of go by what we did in the municipal center as a good example. Um, we had, when we, last time we got a new boiler. Well, not not the most recent time, but the one time before that, we kept the old boiler as a backup. And um. Fortunately, when the new boiler uh, went down because of a power failure and it was this kind of a series of cascading failures that that caused it to crack. Um. The old boiler picked up the slack and was there as a backup. So um, to what extent? Uh, I I know that having the four boilers was. Uh, good in that respect, whether you can get away with three, I'm not really sure.
I just feel like the question should be asked by those who do know.
Yeah.
We took a walk up there. And for what I know, they're designed to all run at a certain, um, not RPM, but certain temperature to keep everything going, so they're really designed. To have four units up there. We took two out of the line because they were broken and just they just didn't fix them, so they did with what they had.
Right, so it's been working with two boilers only, so.
But for how long?
They're working harder.
So how how long? If if it was designed to have four in series, we should put four back in, you know what I mean, that's how it was designed up there. It's up in the penthouse, they did a beautiful job, it just, uh, there's two boilers that need to be replaced, so.
And I think to, if to Brad's point, you know, or or are are they worth repairing with the age of them? But the fact that they're all the same age, I think we can't give up on. The age of them and we need to get them all up and running, so regardless of the ages, they're all working less.
And if we lose another one of the old ones, we can get by again.
At least we're better than we were.
Two is not okay.
I mean, you have an, I I do have a question, right, I I think the approach we generally take it is to look at all these items as if we were purchasing them for our household. I don't feel like I could make it an informed decision. Based on what I've heard, other people may have more background story. But what what started me down this path of kind of. Wondering if I knew what was going on was, we all know B and D Controlled Air Corp. Josh and the guys do a great job, we've had group experiences with Connecticut combustion, Eric, you've told us. That there's a variance of almost eighty thousand dollars between those three bids, those cannot be apple to apple comparisons. So at least for for me, if I was going to try to make a decision on a household purchase. On putting a new furnace in my house, I'd like folks to kind of come back with a little bit more specificity about what's gonna happen. Who looked at this? What did they think the solution should be, and here's the cost, pros and cons of all that. And and just, and it's, look, it's probably just me being. You know, skeptic at heart, but I I just don't feel like, based on what we've heard tonight, that. That makes sense to go forward, that's right, we've had time, I think Cynthia may have been hinting at this, we've had times when we've beaten up the presentation, it really felt good. Kind of coming out and we've gotten a curveball thrown to us, I I don't feel like that happens, but I, like I. I can say with hand on heart, we're making an informed decision on. Forty three thousand dollars.
Hey, Eric, I think you spoke on this early on and I think you probably went pretty quick. This first of forty two thousand was a direct replacement, they pluck it out, leave everything else the same. The other companies wanted to redesign it and they were doing some different things to it, so that's where, that's where I understand the money was coming from, Eric. Am I, did I hear that or?
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm not probably doing justice, Joshua's here, he could explain this much better than I could, but yes, that's that's my understanding, is that this. This is just replacing uh, the heat exchangers, I guess it's called, or just. Um, not the entire thing, not the entire thing, the other two quotes were to replace the whole, the whole kingdom. So yes, I I.
I think it's almost a repair instead of dumping the whole thing out, you know?
I I I get that, they could be different, Nick, I'd like somebody to explain to us, so that we know why.
Yeah. Eric, even if we had have a special meeting, I mean, are they trying to get this, obviously not before the heating season, is that correct?
Uh, we'd like to if we could.
You know, they got worse things.
Close at this point, but yeah, I mean. I think they're like four to five weeks out on the parts.
Can can we get more information from him?
Sure, yeah.
Yes, Cynthia, one second, please, so if we can get, and we'll have a special, even if it's Zoom, you know what I mean? Cynthia, please, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, I'm with Bob Manfreda on this because. I like to see something like a scenario thing, like, like. What the different options are and, you know, make a case for what each one, you know? Um, like pros and cons kind of thing, and because it is a big decision, and of course we need boilers. But I don't, I feel like I don't, I I bereft of lack of information, I don't feel like I have. Enough details to really. And to go to the point of it being my house. I would feel the same way that Bob was saying.
Okay.
So we need to get, I think we need to get more information.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that, Cynthia, I think a motion that we table this under old business. Let's second it, okay?
And we'll get some more information about this, Robert?
Eric, we'll we'll get together offline and and see what we can do and we'll.
Yeah.
Quick, I I, we're not trying to delay, we're just trying to be comfortable with it.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah, I can do a special meeting, Zoom meeting, whatever you guys want to do.
We'll talk offline on that, okay?
Sounds good.
I'll try, everybody, all in favor on table now, and under old business, say this, say and I, excellent. Great, Eric, we have one more thing, we have a a highway um, a snowplow for Victor and some lighting. Um, if I could just jump in, Eric, when we have, we approved um, a new pickup truck. And our theory was that we're gonna use the old plow off of the other truck, cause it was a nine, nine year old plow. Um, I did go down to the highway garage, um, they had concerns, uh, Fisher makes all plug and place stuff. Um, and this plow that was on it, the blade itself is good, okay, it's an eight foot blade, I would never use an eight foot, but. The wiring and the frame is really hogged up. So we have a nice, beautiful truck and it would probably cost John and I, when over, probably forty five hundred to to fix this, right? And the plow is seven thousand for a whole new plow. So. I I think our recommendation would be to to put good stuff on this new truck. Sell the old plow with the old truck and that money and come back to C N R to reimburse this money. Okay, so Eric, I don't mean to take your thunder out of there, but we don't need to go over this long. Um, we did never, we didn't, we did not talk about lighting on it, and again, it's a safety issue, side of the road, middle of the night. Um, there's a two thousand dollar invoice, everybody has it, it's locally done. Um, and I think it's, I would support it, so if, uh, Eric, are you good with us just going with it?
Yeah, the only thing I add, Nick, I think you explained that well, I, only thing I would add is that we did get a second quote and that quote was only like a hundred dollars less, but it was a company. Was it Waterbury or somewhere, whereas these guys are right over, uh, right over in Danbury.
Yeah, universal welding, but I think combination between the wiring and the plow, I think Nest did a better job on price, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Um, I would make a motion that we recommend. Two thousand thirty eight dollars and eighty three cents to come out of C N R for the lights, uh, the the lighting kit for um, the superintendent of highway truck. Who have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, does any of this discussion on the lighting for the highway superintendent truck? Try everybody's minds, sing a say and I?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. And then the snowplow, um, is on the back page, we're saving paper. And this came down a little bit, this is for an eight foot blade, uh, I talked to Victor, he didn't want to get a nine foot, we don't need to get into the woods on that. I'd make a motion for seven thousand and seventy six dollars and forty cents to replace. The whole new plow and frame kit for the superintendent's highway, uh, to not exceed that number and coming out of C N R.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second. Uh, any other discussion on the plow for Victor's truck?
Real quick, I think I understood what you said, is that we had originally planned to take the old plow off the old truck, just plug it into the new truck, and for some reason, that doesn't work.
It, that that plow that's on Bobby, what we call Bobby's truck, Bobby's old truck, it was hogged up from another truck before that. So it just was not feasible to hog it up again to be in a brand new truck, there's LED lighting, there's different, different stuff, and it just won't be right, and. For three more thousand, we're gonna get it all brand new, but the truck, the other truck is gonna be sold with the plow, so it's worth more money and it's gonna offset this, so, okay. So do we have any other discussion on that? I'll try everybody's minds, sing a say and I, right? Excellent, Eric, I think, uh, we're gonna do the roof project. I know it's the design and I know we have a building uh, committee here, um, there's been no official drawings or anything, but Roger, is there something you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, um, Roger Young from the public site and building commission.
Glad to have you.
Anthony and Tom. Um, so we just had a meeting at the board of selectmen, this was from the board of Ed that uh, gave us the project. Back in August, uh, they went out earlier this year, had bids in March. Uh, sorry, proposals went out in March, bids came back in April, five engineering firms consulted towards. Uh, and we reviewed the five of them, they did pick the lowest bidder based on their um. Um, experience and because this is a roof, this is an assessment. Of the Bepel High School roof. The older section, I have a, not the dedicated. But the older section plus the newer gym se- section. But the older section plus the newer gym se- section. The older section is twenty-six years old, the newer one is fifteen years old. Uh, Doc Carver from the Board of Ed said that uh, the uh, both the roofs, if they do do them, are uh, they qualify for re-in, reimbursed for forty-seven percent or something. So this is only for the assessments of both of them. We uh, chose to have them look at not only the old roof, but the new roof. So that's what that uh, that was for um.
And Roger, we don't have the dollar amount in front of us. Um, is it seventy-three something?
Cause the older one, it's, it's on the back of.
We don't have it in our packet and I apologize. Just because it, right, but what was the total dollar amount with the alternate, seventy-three? Yeah, just, I I have it in email, that's all. I'm sorry, seventy-three?
Thousand two hundred dollars for both the base, which is the older, which is the large square footage, and the alternate, which is the new gym addition that was put on.
Sixteen years ago.
And and this is for a study for the assessment of what it needs.
For what it needs and they'll build a spec to uh, for the documents to go out for bid.
For bid.
Um, and and I was at that meeting also, what, what they're talking about, there's the gym, it's sixteen years old now. And before this roof really gets going, it's probably gonna be almost two years, so it's gonna be an eighteen-year-old roof. Not saying we have to do it, but for a little bit of money, they're gonna give us a full assessment of what it is and then we can make a decision of what section of the roof we wanted.
And that, and that gym roof is going near the lifetime, it's a broken roof.
Warranty's almost over.
Yeah, so by the time they get all the projects going, it'll be out of warranty.
So now Bethel is, we we go thirty years on that.
Have you seen the highway garage roof? Um, and we did talk about um, get the design specs on it, but even when we bid it, we'll probably bid it as an alternate, no matter what.
And um, not to to run away, but we did have a a meeting, we're up in the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, all met. We were hoping it was gonna be in a forty thousand dollar range to have this study, because the numbers were all over the place of what this roof was gonna be. So we said, okay, we wanna put some money toward, so we know apples for apples, what we're all bidding on, and it came into seventy. And Roger, I, I get this all the, all the time in construction, it's the cheapest bid. I like to say it's the cheapest but qualified bid. You know what I mean? It it sounds better. I don't want the cheapest, like I say, after shopping, I want the cheapest, I I want a qualified guy too, right? You know what I mean? And that's just a, you guys went over their qualifications and you feel like you do the job.
And the Board of Ed, Tyler and Valley.
Spencer, Jennifer.
Yeah, yeah. Went through it, we had meetings with them prior to that, we brought it to the commission. We all took a look at that and at the five bids, we chose that.
You say lowest qualified.
Lowest qualified. The Hallies will say that's what you're there for. So that's what it, there's gonna be a small number. We have to hire a roof company to go up and do some exploratory holes. Um, but we're gonna deal with that, kind of, we're talking maybe a thousand bucks or something like that for the day, type of thing, so. All right, so everybody's on board, kind of know what's going on, so. Right, there's someone who had my motion for seventy-three thousand two hundred.
Um, I'll say so moved, as long as you get the right terminology to create a motion out of that.
So we'd like to make uh, a recommendation out of CNR account for seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars for the high school uh, s- study um, of the roof repair.
So that's your motion, I'll second it.
You have a second, man? All right, Cynthia, you have any questions? You're all good on this, except the price, I know.
I went through the whole presentation upstairs, so yes, I am very well.
I'll try everybody's mind, same as saying yes, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you very much.
Nick, do you want the name of the quote?
We have that.
You know what, Nancy, if you have a copy, we can hand it and just, just, we have it for this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming and thank you for your time. Well, that's the best part of the meeting. Obviously, a lot of people fill in when this comes. Anticipation, so. All right, so the next thing on our agenda is the controllers report.
All right, so um, this is probably the last month.
You don't need to stay. Thank you very much. Brad, I'm sorry, you had a.
Weren't you gonna add something verbally to the?
We did. That was the.
I must have blacked out, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So there's, first, front side page is the, do an update. Uh, the big update here is the revenue drop. Last month, we talked about uh, we're looking at doing a Duracell settlement. We settled with Duracell, that's done. I don't think it's signed yet, because there's still, the lawyers are going back and forth, but it's settled. Um, so there's a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar adjustment to the twenty-twenty-five number. Um, it's a credit that was owed to them. In vague terms, the adjustment versus what we had budgeted for grant list is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to the four, twenty-four and twenty-five, because we had budgeted a lower grant list number, because we knew they were appealing. Um, so it settled, it's they're not happy, we're not happy, but I think everybody's happy that it's with the bed. Um, we weren't super far off dollar-wise what we thought it might come in at, um, with what the number that um, talking to the first elect, been talking to the chairman of what we've kind of held in the grant list, just so we didn't have a huge shock at some point. Um, we were sitting on, they've been paying the tax bill all along. Um, so we did earn some interest on it over that time, um, which is a minor help versus the credit. But we did book the credit in twenty-five, otherwise twenty-six would have got destroyed. Uh, because in twenty-six, they made the first quarter payment, uh, they're not gonna pay anything else this year, because they have this large credit now. Um, so some of that credit will get eaten up in twenty-six and there'll probably be a little bit left for twenty-seven. Um, but it is settled. Um, part of the reason why we wanted to make sure we took the prior differences, accounting-wise, you should, we know about it. Uh, but we have room, we had twenty-twenty-five was a good year for revenue. Um, even with taking that adjustment, we're still almost two million dollars um, in excess of our budgeted revenue number. Two million of that is, it's pretty much all interest. Um, the, um, and that's even without taking the tax stabilization fund money, which I don't think we'll do. We'll talk about it when we do the um, either at the November or December board meeting, we'll do uh, transfers for the year. Um, so the board will vote on whether or not we wanna capture that revenue or not. Um, where we're at, I don't think it makes any sense to, but that's a board decision, that's not a Brad decision. Um, so that's the June update. Uh, I did do the transfers. So when you look on the backside, expenses are a million dollars, so they're good. Um, we talked a lot about uh, park and rec was a big part of that. The refinancing we did was a big part of that. Um, library came in under because they are struggling to keep staff. And they don't just turn around and then spend that money on books when they don't have staffs. Um, uh, the miscellaneous charges is where our contingencies are for wages and um, just their normal contingency. Um, town insurance was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the good. Uh, that's our workers' comp, lab and other things. Um, after the budget, we kind of beat them up a little bit more, we beat up our brokers on some fees. Um, and our or is it discount three ninety, but the employee benefits is two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in good. This is a lot to do with health insurance and staffing. We've had two openings in the health department that we haven't been able to fill. Uh, we had some people leave insurance after the budget was set, so they were taking it, they're not now. Um, so that's, it's mo- a lot driven by vacancies, but one vacancy is thirty thousand dollars for this. Um, and some of it is other benefits, um. What else? The other health insurance, go through it too quick for my own good. Um, but that's why employee benefits is the good, it's mostly the health insurance stuff. Um, uh, and when we settle contracts, usually the premium, the percentage that the staff pays goes up. Um, so obviously that's less expense to the town when they pay a bigger percentage of it. Uh, so expense-wise, we were concerned about it being a bad year, because utilities, utilities was not as bad as uh, we thought it was gonna be, which is good. Um, but because we were concerned about it, we ran as tight as we can on a lot of things too, and some of it is just sometimes the year that park and rec went bad, park and rec was bad, but there's also fleet was really bad, there's a number of things that happened. Um, this year, a lot of things broke right. Some of it is driven by the fact that we went bi-weekly. So instead of having fifty-two pays, we have twenty-six pays a year, so it's really like twenty-five and a half. Because of the timing of it, um, it is captured in our accrued payroll. But the adjustment to the accrued payroll wasn't as big as it needed to be, because that was a big number that the auditors were carrying. Um, for some previous staff that we don't, you know, you don't have staff, you don't have as big of a group payroll. Um, so that's the update on June thirtieth.
How many employees are are not, that were carrying the salaries that, that they're I guess you wouldn't know the library, but the health department, what?
So there's two in the health department. In twenty-five, we had budgeted two full-time people in IT. Um, the network administrator left, the assistant was hired to be the network administrator. Um, we eventually replaced the second IT person with a part-time person. So not only was it vacant for a while, uh, but then it was replaced with a part-time person. In the twenty-six budget, we budgeted for a part-time IT person. Um, but IT on here is to the good, uh, state processing ninety-four thousand dollars. Most of that salary, because if we had one person instead of two for a.
And your benefits also stacked up in there.
Benefits, that's another vacancy that we had.
That's only two and a half employees, the next question, that the town is recognizing that we're not paying the salary.
You signed the library.
Yeah, the library's had a lot of, like, we were talking to Megan earlier today. Um, about one person that's done, and then she just had another person that I guess got married, is moving to San Diego. Not much you can do about that, but it's, that's another staff vacancy.
And you made a comment that instead of paying employees or buying books, because that's like.
They're not buying books, that's why there's extra money here.
Oh, okay, I thought, I, and and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought we, they also have a bottom line.
They have a bottom line?
Yes.
The library director and board haven't turned around and spent salary money in other categories when they were. So the library's been returning money every year, because they're having, they're struggling to stay fully staffed. But they have the budget, like they're not gonna lose people, because you don't know.
Like to recognize could be.
Yeah, but they don't turn, they could, they could, they can do whatever they want with it.
Yeah.
I think some of it, and you saw that they spent it all on books and not on staff. I think there might be ramifications.
Well, but I, I thought, I thought what you were joking, now that I know you were joking, was more serious.
And we wouldn't know that unless you told us.
Well, you do get the detail, so the detail would be charged.
Is it that far in that detail area?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, um, but yeah, so that's June thirtieth.
Do you have eleven by seventeen paper or don't you?
Put it up on the screen. And then for September, we're three months out of the year. So some of the salary lines, if you're looking on the expense side, look higher, but there was three pays in January. Um, not January, July, um, wrong beginning of the year. Um, again, we're gonna have twenty-six pays, because we're bi-weekly. So that means two months out of the year, you have three paychecks instead of two. One of them happened to be in the first quarter. The next one should probably be in the third quarter, I haven't put that my thing on my wall.
You're gonna look heavy on that, so.
Yeah, so that's gonna affect some of it. And some of it, like, park and rec is always heavier to start because of summer camps. Um, the employee benefits line, uh, we only make, oh, it's September, we didn't make the, sometimes you have to pay like insurances the middle of the month prior, so you get some of those. Um, but there's really not, there's no like, it's three months in the year, there's not like anything glaring, other than like debt service, we paid four million of the five million dollars. We paid all the principal for up here, because when we refinanced, everything now, principal-wise, is due in July and August. Um, and we'll have one more interest payment, you have it six months later. So it's either January or February, we have another interest payment. Uh, revenue-wise, uh, we're sixty thousand dollars short of our interest number for the year already. Um, so obviously, we're gonna blow past that. Um, and other than that, it's kind of early on everything else. Uh, I don't know if I mentioned it last month, we did get, our insurance carrier uh, does revenue sharing. Uh, two years ago, we didn't get anything. Last year, we got thirty-four thousand, we budgeted thirty, this year was seventy-one. So they have a good year, because it's a pool and it's all connected, um. It's a revenue share piece, but it's their board decides how much we get, depending on how. The year we did is because.
That money trickles in, and then when we do transfers, then we decide how we're gonna.
Yeah, so the revenue is the revenue. So the revenue at the end of the year, when it's, then it goes into the fund balance policy and the board decides what to do with it. Then, um, the expense, like this million dollars in expense in twenty-five right now, um, at some point, uh, Nick and I'll sit down and I'll, we'll talk to the first elect too of like EDC, the Clark Park still owes us like two hundred something thousand dollars that we talked about, at some point we gotta clear out. Um, the paramedic program owes us three to four hundred thousand dollars, like, so.
We've been chipping away at that.
We've been chipping away, but it's a good year.
To chip away a little more.
And it's, uh, obviously a good place to always put it, is CNR. We know we have capital needs. CNR has a healthy fund balance in it, but if it's in CNR, it doesn't affect their fund balance when everybody looks at it. Um,
It's a great nest egg. It looks good.
And it's a lot more versatile than fund balance, because fund balance, you have to go to a town meeting for anything over fifty thousand dollars. Whereas CNR, uh, usually it comes a recommendation through the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Finance has the ability to spend it like for bits next. Um.
I thought once we adopted the fund balance policy, anytime we were over eighteen percent, nobody looks at it negatively, as long as we don't go under the eighteen.
Correct.
They like, they like us having a policy, that's what.
No, 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 I know we have a policy, but it, but Brad, you said that if we do different things with it and it doesn't go in CNR, that people look at it differently. Not in a negative way, right?
No, so if you have, so this year, we're gonna have room in the expense line, do, we'll call them transfer out, right? So you can transfer it out. You can just let it, if you do nothing, whatever's left will just go into the fund balance. Uh, but once it's in the fund balance, then you can decide what to do with it. So you have two bites of the apple, really, with the excess revenue of what you wanna do with it. Um, sometimes it's cleaner to like, not have it jump your fund balance number up in your audit.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So that's a negative, that looks negative as well?
It's I, they're not gonna be mad at you for having twenty-three, twenty-four percent necessarily. But they might then go like, well, why do you have twenty-three, twenty-four? Obviously, we're in unprecedented times for interest. And I, Bob's over there going, well, in nineteen ninety-seven. Maybe not ninety-seven.
He sounds like his father sometimes, I got that.
But like, for what, I think for the fourteen years I've been with the town, the last two years of interest, or two and a half years of interest, it's unprecedented.
It's been huge.
You know, we used, one year we borrowed at eleven basis points. You know?
We're buying fire trucks with that money. I mean, it's big numbers.
Yeah, um, and it's a great time that we've had this money to do things. Some of the reason why it's higher is um, we've had ARPA funds too. ARPA's, obviously those funds are gone. But that was almost six million dollars that didn't need to come from the budget, didn't need to come from the capital. Yeah, so, um, and with everything being refinanced right now, like, obviously we know whether it comes from CNR or fund balance, the board approved money to design a roof at the high school. Even with the reimbursement from the state, that's a huge multi.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
It's a little bit responsive to John's.
It's a little bit responsive to John's point about whether having a very high balance is ever gonna look at unfavorably.
Yeah.
Remember many, many years, maybe five, six years ago, uh, when was Malloy the governor?
Uh, it's like seven, eight years ago.
It was during his administration where he started supposedly going down the list of fund balances in certain towns.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Balances to, you're not going to get whatever the state allocations, are you hearing any of that? Just, I think, is the other part of the question.
Um, yeah, so it was a meeting that Bob Kozowski and I were at, and Malloy was there, I think it was the Council of Small Towns. And one of the reporter, Mark Edwards or something like that, was sitting at the same table as us, cause he was listening, they were recording Malloy speaking. And he goes, I've looked at all your fund balances. And he looks at us, not knowing what Bethel's is, he goes, that's not good.
Why would he say that?
At the time, the state didn't have money and towns did.
Yeah.
So the state, and that was when they were talking about putting the teacher retirement funds on the town and all that stuff, because the state was in bad shape. We haven't heard it, because the state is flush. So the state's been, right now, the state's been doing really well, so all that, we are not hearing any of that from the state right now. Um. Fast forward a couple of years, we may be back, but the, the rainy day fund with the state is full. So the state is currently flush.
Cynthia, Cynthia, did you have something? I know it's.
I just, I just had a comment, because I remember that period of time and they couldn't really, they weren't able to really get their budget together and there was a concern that. They would raid our funds, like that they were going to try to somehow, you know, use a portion of town funds to. Help them out at the state level. But that didn't happen.
Right. Yeah, cause I was, I was up at the state, I was there for that.
Um, and one of the things that, one of the big, they have is with the state pensions. The state pension problems aren't fixed, but they're in way better shape because the state has had money over the last couple of years. They've been dumping money into the pensions, and I think they've limited, like, they've taken ten billion dollars off their long-term liability or some huge number. Because they keep pulling down thirty-year basis like they can with their pensions. Uh, but they, you dump like four billion dollars in today, and if it grows the way it can, we've had good growth in a lot of the pension stuff too, is. Four billion today might take ten billion off the long-term, you know, need of it, money now versus money later. Um, so they've done all that stuff, so they're in way better shape, but all it takes is a downturn and money evaporates from their taxes. The state's been doing well with the tax returns. This, we got a lot of ARPA money, the state's got a lot of ARPA money, and they had a lot of influx of people moving to Connecticut during COVID. Uh, so right now, times are good. So it's, but it's more of a reason that locally, we should be making sure that we are putting money away in our C N R, keeping our fund balance healthy.
It, it looks wonderful.
Yeah.
Repairing stuff.
Repairing stuff. There is a balance of. Not assuming times are always gonna be good, but also not assuming that tomorrow it's gonna be bad and we can't spend it, right? Like, I think this board's done a really good job in trying to balance that. Um, and we talk a lot about the Manfreda doctrine of like getting off the credit card, but like. Our lending, way more hand-to-fist with the money that we have, and that is prudent for long-term, you gotta, there's gonna be downturns again.
Someone like to make a motion on the controller's report? What's your new title now coming up?
And, uh, some.
We'll see.
Financial.
I don't know.
It's on the ballot, it's on the ballot.
I like the controller.
I'm just a little weird.
I'll make a motion that we, the controller's report.
Excellent, and, uh.
I'll second that motion, sir.
Excellent, so all in favor on that?
Aye.
Okay, before we leave, um, I think this town and myself owes Bob Manfreda a huge thank you.
What do you mean, he's got two more meetings.
You don't know, he's, he could be in Hawaii tomorrow, he doesn't know.
That's a fair point.
It's a great.
It's a fair point. Do you live out of your suitcase at home?
Yes. He has one of those racks.
Yeah.
But Bob, I wanna thank you, you taught me a lot, and this town owes you a big thank you.
I think you're very ambitious.
All right, I make a motion. You've got a lot of history, go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I, you know, I've come to, um, to respect and revere the Manfreda doctrine. And I was a, I was a tough sell, so. Over time. Over time.
All right, all in favor of Jeremy?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
That was unnecessary, but appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.